An administrator.
Sure, thank you. So, right now, in the general public, anyone that has been trained in the general public can give it. In the school system, we would ask that people be trained in order to give it, and you do not have to be a medical provider to give it. I could train you as a, you know, if you were a teacher, or if you were a parent, if you were the custodian, if you were, you know, the lunch providers. So, as long as you have been trained in what Narcan is and how to use it, then you will be able to use it.
I'm assuming the training would also...
Can I pause for a second? Somebody said we're offline, are we back up?
Okay, sorry, that's one of those red flags, sorry.
Just in terms of, um, the training would also include how to identify best you can, so people are given to the appropriate person. Like you said, the downside is certainly not, it's worth it to give it to somebody who suspects this is what they're dealing with. And then, just in terms of making sure, the, like you said, the AED boxes would be stored, but then was also going to be stored in, seemed to potentially numerous other places.
So, right now, if you were to go in this building specifically, we have three AED boxes. I'm asking to store it in two. Those are the primary ones. I, as a nurse, would like to keep one in my EpiPen box. I have an unlocked EpiPen box. Um, I would like to keep some there. I also believe that my administrator should have access to that in case I am not readily available. Um, the goal is to have this available, to decrease any stumbling blocks to get it if needed, because breathing is really important. Without breathing, it's an issue. Yes.
Yeah.
I know you're gonna ask, you gave me the look.
Tom kind of brought the subject up, but how would the average person that had been trained know where to go and who to find to get a key, or to get that person to unlock it and come with it?
Sure. So, if there was an emergency and I come across somebody who is not breathing and you happen to be walking alongside of me, I'm gonna stop and check, and I'm going to see that this person is not breathing well. And I'm gonna say, can you run to the AED box just in the lobby, pull it open and bring me the entire contents? Those boxes are not locked, they're alarmed. So, that's, nothing will be locked up. And that's my goal of having them in the AED boxes, and then as well as having them in the main office during the school day, where that is unlocked, somebody could get that in a hurry. Great questions.
Will there be signage, signage of the AED box saying that it is there?
I think it should be clearly marked, that once you open that AED box, that there would be, you know, clearly marked that there would be Narcan. I'm not sure that, at this point, because it is still new, I'm not sure if I would want to markate the outside of the AED box that it included Narcan. We are in our baby steps, but we want to make sure that we are on board. And we could always change that. Any other questions? Please.
Do they keep an AED on the athletic field when there's events going on?
Our athletic trainer has her own separate AED.
So, would they keep Narcan along with that then, to ensure that's out there available?
Yes.
Has, in New Found area, have there been any students that have needed this?
That have needed Narcan?
Yeah, in the last several years?
With, in regards to maintaining privacy.
Not asking names?
Yeah, that's okay. Have there been students involved with potential? Yes, and those students have been sent out for evaluation. I have not found anyone unresponsive and not breathing, yet.
Can you predict if anyone will need it in the next several years?
Unfortunately, as trends are going, um, there, we've all heard that there are fentanyl out there. Fentanyl, you don't even have to take. All you have to do is touch somebody else's paraphernalia and you absorb it or ingest it. So, you can, you can get an opioid in your system through touching, that's absorption. You can get it through ingestion, meaning, you know, maybe you have a bag that you had something in it, somebody else put something else in it, you didn't know, and there's a contamination. I'm gonna ask my fellow police.
I was gonna bring that up, that you're probably more likely to have an accidental overdose here, that somebody, there's thirteen students that say they've done it, one of those thirteen students leaves it on the library couch, and somebody else grabs it and has no idea what they had, and then absorbs into their system, and then they overdose. Or, if one of those kids happens to open up their bag and it goes flying out of the bag, which happens 100%, and it goes in the air, everybody in that area has now been contaminated by it. So, it sounds like a crazy scenario, but it is definitely happens.
It does happen. Because it happened to me. And Chris was there for the aftermath. I opened something I shouldn't have, thought it was something else, and I was covered like powdered sugar. And I was taken off to Franklin Hospital, I wasn't overdosed, I wasn't overdosing, but I had an extreme exposure to it. Chris was there shortly after, and it was one of the first in the country for any law enforcement. There was a certain member of the board that was terrified by my exposure, which I'm not gonna mention. But I'm gonna tell you right now, if you guys think that there's not Narcan, you say out there, and you said out there, and I'm gonna call you out on that, it's here. It's right out these doors. It's within two minutes' drive from here. I guarantee several grams have driven past in the time that you made that presentation, I guarantee it. It's here. And if any of you guys think that it's not here and not in these communities, you're burying your head in the sand. And I wish I could live like that, but I can't anymore. On a day-to-day basis, we see more methamphetamine on these streets than we do marijuana now. How scary is that? And if we can't look after our kids and our fellow each others with a little bit of Narcan, I'd give it out on traffic stops. And Alexandria is a little different, because we don't have to go through rigmarole and take crap from other people, we do what we want. Do you guys know?
Who's the chief?
Yeah, I'm the chief, I'm the boss, do that. But we do, we give it out on traffic stops from people that are coming from certain houses in town that we're watching. Because I don't want to put another person in a bag. And if that means we put some in the school, yeah, let's do it. But change that policy to make everyone in the school covered by your administration of Narcan. Thank you, sorry, I'm a little bit emotional about it.
We have two people.
A lot of people may not know, but it's coming, and it looks like candy. It's colorful, they're smuggling across the border in M&amp;M's bags, Skittles bags. In one weekend, at one border crossing, CBP confiscated half a million fentanyl pills. One crossing, one weekend, half a million. And they all look like candy. So, like you said, Lieutenant, it may be accidental. So, I'm surprised that you guys don't have a lock on already. That blew my mind tonight.
Well, we want to get it, right? We can go backwards, we can go forwards.
It's a next policy committee meeting.
I like the idea, when he was going over situations. The thing that come to mind was you said that if you come across somebody, is there like a contact list of people? Say you have a teacher that's filling in, sub-teacher comes in, and something happens in their classroom, how are they gonna, I mean, how are they gonna know who? Are they gonna know to get ahold of you, or do they have a contact list that they can go to and say, hey, I gotta get ahold of this person?
Sure. So, if we have somebody who's in our classroom, or if they are in robotics and they're in another room in our, in our school, and if they come across a person who's having any kind of a medical issue that looks like they're not okay, hopefully, if it's during the school day, it's either a call to the main office, who then can page me, or overheads page me. Anybody can pick up the phone and we can dial 911. It's absolutely, absolutely, absolutely okay to call 911. If you are not sure, it's better to call them and have them come. That five to six-minute timeframe is so important. Your brain stops without oxygen.
If you're using, if you're using it, you've got somebody who's unconscious laying on the ground, so you're gonna, you're gonna know that, you're gonna need the ambulance to be there.
And for me, it would be me coming across a student who may be unconscious on the floor. I may not know what's going on, I may not have anybody being able to tell me what they've seen. I'm gonna have to go off of my, like, best instincts, but it may take me like thirty seconds to a minute to do a complete assessment and figure out what I need. Did you have a question?
Yeah, just real quick, you had mentioned for all the other things, you were trying to do something with your standing order now. You said if they have an asthma thing on file, then yes, that we give an albuterol. Well, clearly, we're not waiting, or we don't know who's gonna need this naloxone, so they're not gonna have a standing order, is that, you're getting that separately so that you don't have to worry about that?
Great question, so thank you. On the standing orders. Our very last, on our very last column, right over here, this is where I'm looking on the standing orders, there, right now, for tonight's board meeting, there are three. And it says epinephrine, Narcan, and albuterol.
Right, I understand, I was just saying, clearly, people are not gonna know ahead of time if they need to be using naloxone, so they're not gonna have anything on file unless, you know, they're a repeat offender, and then they're probably not gonna be in regular, everyday school setting, they're probably gonna be getting some help. That's why I was just confused, maybe it was your wording, that's all.
Okay.
So, they don't need to have anything on file for it to be used? Or they might be finding them...
For right now, if I'm outside of school, and I am not employed, Lisa Hudson RN for Narcan, you know, for New Found Regional High School, if I'm just in Hannafords.
No, I was just meant in here, in our school.
So, I can give it. But here in school, I can't give any medication, including Narcan, without a doctor's prescription, without a doctor's signature. So, that's why we're asking Narcan to be included on our standing orders, so that we can have it available.
And then you'll be able to use it without worry.
And then we can use it once everybody's properly trained. Great question, so thank you.
So, if we want, what we can do is, I've heard some scuttle like that, I'm gonna say now, the policy needs to go to policy committee, because it has Rhode Island Health Department, it just needs to be cleaned up. We need to reach out to legal and all of those pieces. It is on the standing orders, what we can potentially do is approve the standing orders, and then send the actual policy, so that we can at least get it here, get it in the buildings, and then get the policy cleaned up. If that makes sense to you guys. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You said that there's an expiration date, so how long does a bottle last of Narcan?
You know, I don't know that I have an answer for you right tonight, but typically, our medications can last, when I get them, like, a year or two. So, basically, you look at the expiration date on the bottom of the box that it comes in. So, when I go and check my AEDs every month, and check the expiration of the AED pads, make sure that everything else is kosher and not kept, then I would also be checking the Narcan to make sure that it's in date and rate.
Another thing to think about is, it could be used at nighttime, when you guys, when you're not here for sporting events, so that could not be in that bag, too. You would never, it's alarmed, but after you close the door, I'm assuming the alarm, you wouldn't even know if at nine o'clock at night for basketball, it got used. You wouldn't know the next day unless I'm told to.
Yeah, and so, that's one of our, one of the things that we want. If Narcan is used in any of our school buildings, then there will be a next step. That way, we can kind of debrief, we can talk about, okay, what did it look like? So, we can recognize it even a little bit better next time. How did it work? And then, how do we get it replaced ASAP, so that we aren't missing doses? Yes, Lucy?
So, I was trained recently as well, and the woman who trained me, she mentioned that people coming out of an overdose can be aggressive, violent. And she advised me not to use it if I'm alone. And so, I just wanted to make sure, I think there was something in your language about, like, omission, and I just wanted to make sure that it covers, like, that people aren't required to give it if it's not safe for them to do so.
So, that was that point, that you would not be held liable if you chose not to use it?
I just wanted to clarify, that was part of the policy language.
For me, yes, am I gonna probably get punched in the face by somebody if it's an aggressive man coming out? Yep, but it's worth it to me. Am I gonna get hollered at, am I gonna get called every name in the book? Probably.
Can I just talk to that for a second? I've seen it used, I can't tell you how many times, and how many times I've administered it, and I've never seen anyone extremely violent with it. It's more shock and startle, that suddenly they're awake and here, and they're surrounded by all these people in weird uniforms and flashing lights. Chris?
Yeah, I mean, you've got potential, they just get up and walk away. Yeah, anyone not gonna do with anybody. I mean, it's stupid, you got a little...
I've never seen anyone violent.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, are we gonna be, with the plan that you outlined, are we gonna be able to have it available to be used if there was an emergency, as soon as it's here?
Yes, because then they'll have a physician's order signed, they can use it, but we need to clean up. Because I already just, just in my five minutes looking at it, I'm like, oh, yeah. So, I just think we need to, we need to send it to legal, make sure we have it clean, and we can bring it back to the twelve, 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 twelve meeting. Because we have a policy committee meeting coming up, too, I think, right? Right? Sorry. But this is one, this is one we can bring up just separate of, I, I don't know if you guys are okay with that. So, then can we respectfully submit the standing orders? What we gotta vote on? I need a motion. Yes?
I make a motion that we approve the standing orders for all three items. The Epi is...
The naloxone, I know, but you guys have standing orders for time, and I've opened them at the beginning of it. Let me make sure we...
All standing orders, and including on the list, Narcan.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Thank you.
Next. Sorry, it's been a long evening so far, even. Hill School Board, how are you guys?
We're great. How are you?
Good, thank you.
So, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Brian Conley. I am the superintendent, principal of the Jenny Blake School of the Hill School District. This is Michelle Munson, who is a member of the board. And we are in our eighth year of our agreement, our tuition agreement. We tuition our seventh through twelfth grade students, we are a pre-K through sixth grade school. And the term, I'm just going to read this, so it's right off of the agreement. The term of the agreement, the term of this contract shall be for ten years, and shall commence on the school year beginning July 1st, 2015, and shall terminate on July 1st, 2025. Each board shall notify the other on or before June 30th of 2023, if it wishes to extend the agreement with or without amendments, or to terminate the agreement. So, I, we have been wanting to at least start this conversation, because June, as we know in the world of school, will come up on us, and I don't want to be, oh, oh, we needed to do this. So, that's, you know, part of our reason for coming. And on behalf of the school and the district, I have been there, this is my seventh year. The first, first year I was there, we were SAU 18. So, we were, I was hired from Franklin, Dan Legala, who hired me. And thankfully, Nancy was on the board. When I was hired. And then, when we became SAU 103, Michelle was the part-time superintendent for those three years, while I went back and got my, fourth degree. I got my superintendent certification, and I've been both the principal and superintendent for the last three years. This is my fourth year in that role, which I've enjoyed thoroughly. And I've had, I think, good working relationships with both Stacy, Mrs. Buckley, excuse me, and Mr. Couture, who I lean on for lots of different things, because being a superintendent can be lonely. And it can be even lonelier if you're out in Hill, and you're all by yourself. And really, it's myself and Jennifer Moody, who does the day-to-day operations, who also acts as our business and finance, which is another thing that we've discussed informally, and now formally here. So, I just want to, you know, start that conversation with you, that we've been thrilled, I've been thrilled with all the support, with how our students have been embraced in your district, how they excel, how they grow, they mature, and they're wonderful young people, young adults when they graduate. I've been happy to attend the last three graduations, and it's very, very exciting. This year will be my first sixth-grade class who's graduating. It's a little exciting. And my sixth grade are my babies, my first kindergarten class this year. So, it's very, very exciting to be part of the New Found community, because you value education, we value education, and we hope that our relationship can continue to grow. And as we get towards 20,000, 20,000. Long day, 2025. I would like to be able to present to our community, because it's ultimately your community and our community, who decides the future of our, of our relationship. So, you know, as I see it, you know, there's a lot of shaking and rocking and rolling here with your architectural studies and your vision for the future. So, it's a good time to have a conversation, because there are changes going on, and whether we're part of those changes, whether we're, you know, I don't know. But we need to start having this conversation. So, that's part of the reason why we're here this evening. Pierre, did I miss anything?
No. Did very well.
Okay.
Yeah, we talk about the future a lot, and how Hill fits in, you know, and I do, I agree that, you know, really value, we enjoy having your students here, and you're a good partner.
What's that? Oh, no. At the high school?
No, altogether.
Oh, no, sixty-something.
Yeah, I hear about sixty students.
Forty-one at the high school, and nineteen at the middle and high, at the middle, excuse me. Yeah, so, and we have a tuition bill upcoming soon, which I don't mind paying. I'm sure you don't mind receiving, so that's a good thing. So, you know, the way I see it, and the way we came about our own SAU, is, you know, Franklin decided to withdraw from 18, which left us our option to become our own, or to look at other districts. And we looked at Winasquam, we looked at Franklin, and we looked at New Found. And fortunately, we landed here. So, as this ten-year approaches, again, we need to decide, is, is it still viable to be our own SAU? Does it mean, you know, do we knock on some other SAU's door and say, you know what, we tried? But maybe there's a better solution, economically, educational-wise, whatever it may be. There's no hidden agenda, I think it's incumbent upon us, the Hill District, to share with our community what our options are. And they will make the decision. And obviously, your community has to make that decision, too. But I've been very, very happy and feel very fortunate that we have been so welcomed in your district, and I do hope we can continue that relationship. Because I plan on retiring, either where I am or here, in this area, because it's a great place. It really is. So, that's all I have.
And I know the board would like to, you know, have some meetings with this board, and have some conversations, and do some studying, and interact more, to sort of flesh out what those things are. So, we're looking forward to that, hopefully after budget season.
Question for you, are your numbers, are you seeing the steady change in fluctuation of some decreased numbers at your schools? Are you guys getting that as well, is your state about pretty steady?
We bottomed out, you know, we did, we have been, you know, our K6 population has been around between forty-seven and fifty for the last three years. But we've just started a full-time preschool program, five days a week, full day. We have, yes, we have a waiting list, and it's full, and it's awesome. I mean, it's so cool, I love it. I never thought I'd love this, but I love it. I come from a middle school, eighth grader, science background, and I'm like, I love this. I'd never do know what it is. So, anyway, that's where we're at right now.
It'll be there.
Yeah, it'll be, yeah, it's growing, it's growing. I know our incoming, our incoming kindergarten class this year, I think already, is ten, and that's without, you know, saying, hey, it's time to register. That's just with the eight preschool kids that are, I know are rolling up, and two other families have already reached out. So, my guess is, it's going to continue to grow.
What is your school capacity?
There's been as many as 109, but currently, we're at 63. And that includes the preschool. Yes.
How far am I headed from Bristol?
Six, six and a half miles.
Danbury.
Uh, wildish, over Marie Hill. Downward Hill, and then another one on four.
Yeah, I can tell it's that skirt.
It's about fifteen, twenty minutes.
Twenty, twenty minutes, but probably closer to eighteen miles. Maybe, yeah.
Well, if you can't make it to fifteen minutes, it's more than that. Well, maybe you can, Michelle. Any other questions? Comments?
Should we have, like, a committee to start discussing this with the Hill District? Like, some of the board, I don't know if it needs to be the whole board, or just a few members of the board?
Yeah.
I don't know what the, what the plan is, but...
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I mean, it's, like you said, it's coming, it's, well, with, like you said, too, with the architectural study and all these, there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle. Lots of moving pieces that, yeah, you might be right, it might behoove us to...
To start, sooner.
To set up a committee sooner rather than later.
After budget.
Right, but even if there's a couple just...
February, yeah.
February would be good.
Or not organized, a little... Organizational meetings, there we go, it's getting late.
And our board is only three members, so we have to figure out how to do that.
Gotcha. Does somebody, well, does somebody want to make a motion to set up a committee?
Still moved.
I'll second that, I'll second that.
What's the official name of it? Hill Committee?
New Found Tuition Agreement Committee Group People's Study.
Because that is called the New Found Proper School District Tuition Agreement for Hill School District.
Yeah, we call it that committee.
I second that committee.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. There we go. I think that's good to get it, I think it's good that you guys came out and we get us, like you said, get it sooner rather than later, I think that's heading in the right direction. All right, thank you very much. All right, school board evaluation, that was on. Because at that time of year, I think we probably missed it by a little bit. I think we were a little bit behind, but we'll be sending out, working with the office, about sending out the school board evaluation, community members, members of the public, teachers, staff, school board members, the whole nine yards. So, that just, that's just a reminder to people that it's, it's coming. So, people know, it's coming. It'll be open for a couple weeks, there'll be a Survey Monkey sent out. There'll be Survey Monkey link on the SAU website as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Public comment, too.
Michelle has some public comments.
We are now open for public comments.
Hi, everyone. Caitlin Simula of Groton, New Hampshire. I'm a former educator with my master's degree in elementary education, and I'm a preschooler at BHVS. I will be speaking about the current amplified, catified curriculum, and how the company is unethical and immoral, desensitizing our children to sex and creating easy victims of molestation. There are also scary pictures and inappropriate language. First, I would like everyone to raise their hand if they care about the children of SAU 4. We need to remember that we all have something in common at the heart of our community, and to start acting accordingly. I've been kicked out of the Facebook group called New Found Residents Uniting for Quality Education. Myself and others with the same concerns have been called names like racist, MAGA troublemakers, troublemakers, and extremists. I'd like to ask everyone, have you seen it? Have you done your own research? This curriculum was only piloted for nine weeks by four teachers. One teacher didn't even finish all nine weeks because of the content. I feel this curriculum wasn't vetted properly, and a quote from an SAU Four teacher, maybe they should have read it before purchasing it. This is not a quote from a BHVS teacher. Many teachers do not feel comfortable speaking up. Pierre has created this hostile workplace environment, and I have seen the same with delays and roles put into place around viewing the curriculum. Interesting that I knew the copyright laws before this district superintendent and attorney. Please ask yourself why Pierre and Jeanette have not been helping us with this, sitting next to us looking at this, asking us what we are finding. What are they trying to hide? One week, I reviewed the first and second grade curriculum, and the next week, books were missing. I only got the entire resources when I brought up the Right to Know Act. Stop giving us the runaround. Just so the school board members are aware, Pierre has been extremely passive aggressive with BHVS, actually just aggressive, writing up a warning slip to a superb member of this school community and taking away the BHVS mascot until things settle down. As for the curriculum, I have done my own research and I'm appalled with what I have seen, shocked that authors, illustrators, and publishers would deem this age appropriate. I'm in the process of creating a slideshow with examples. So far, there are nine examples from first grade and eleven examples from second grade. In this story for the Right to Learn about the Taliban, it says, "In her home country, a female could be beaten for public speaking." In Emma's poem, it says, "Their homes have been burned, friends and relatives have been killed." All true and part of our history, yes. Too scary for second grade? Absolutely. Please be aware how much time it takes to go through an entire year worth of material. We have really just scratched the surface. I'm not complaining about one book or one story. There are multiple issues throughout every grade, from sexual innuendos to scary pictures and language not fit for elementary school. I've been told trade books or read-aloud books are optional, and there's so much information that we won't be even getting to those this year. The inappropriate content isn't just in trade books, but also teacher manuals, activity books, and lessons, like a unit called Chew, Swallow, Squeeze, and Churn. Much of what I've seen, we should not be subjecting children to, so what exactly did we pay for? I haven't even touched upon actually teaching it, which is a whole other issue. I am requesting from the school board to add me to the school board agenda on twelve-twelve to present the slideshow with specific examples. Melissa and I have already talked about that, I hope that I can do that, because it's one thing for me to stand up here and tell you, it's another thing to see it for yourself. Number two, share the slideshow with all SAU Four educators explaining specific areas to discard and ignore. Number three, put together a curriculum review panel now, immediately, for this curriculum with parents, community members, educators, administrators, and school board members to continue the work myself and others have been doing, going through the curriculum, documenting evidence, and completing the slideshow in detail. Number four, stop all business with Amplify. Do not give any more money to this unethical company. And I will email that to everyone, so then you have it in writing.
Thank you.
I'll also be talking about the CKLA rollout. Okay, first of all, the $2,600 of legal costs due to the RSA 91A request. This is shameful that the taxpayers get stuck paying for this. If this had not been hidden, and we know the books don't go home, so it was very difficult for some of the parents and grandparents to get hold of the materials. And frankly, this just creates suspicion and distrust and it was, and apparently, legal expense. So hopefully, when the rest is rolled out, that we don't go through this again. Just don't hide it from the parents, we'll find out anyway, and let's avoid these legal costs and fighting over this. And also, as Caitlin mentioned, this, we found out that you can make copies, I've taken copies from my, pictures from my phone, so that was just bad information. Let's do better on the rollout, the other rollouts. Okay, now, the curriculum itself, some of us parents and grandparents, we went through, we divvied up the grades. Carolyn Brown and I went through grade three thoroughly ourselves, going through the workbooks and the other manuals and stuff. And actually, we agree with Fran, it's not that bad. Actually, we were pretty pleased with the, most of it. Now, we did find a couple sexual innuendos which have to go, but it was just a couple. So the grade three was pretty good. So, and I would say unlike, I know some of the parents, they just want the whole thing to go. Well, we spent a hundred and eight thousand already, so that's a problem. That would be a waste to the taxpayers if we have to go to something new. And also, if we went to something else, there's no guarantee that will be any better, and it might be worse. This is not that bad, we just need to do a better job on rolling out the other sections. So for moving forward, obviously, if we're going to do science and math and all that other stuff, it's got to be properly vetted before hitting the classroom, which was not done in this case. And then also, especially the younger grades, because all that sexual stuff, the parents just freak out, it is not acceptable. High school already is not such a big deal, but the younger grades really have to be vetted properly. And we already talked about doing a curriculum committee, that's great, have some school board members, also a few parents might be good, too. And my question is on the hundred and eight thousand, does anybody have an idea on this new fancy system that was purchased? How, how long is it good for? I mean, hopefully, the taxpayers don't have to pay another hundred and eight thousand in a few years. So does anybody have an idea, just what's the lifeline of this new system? Maybe somebody could address that, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey.
I'm hoping to get you guys to see where some of the issues that we have with the curriculum is coming from.
Name and...
Oh, sorry, Tiffany Reynolds, New Hampton.
Sorry, thank you.
I do actually write it down, so...
I'm asking you for your empathy, respect, and understanding. You need to understand that students have different households and different backgrounds. One should never assume that just because they might expose their children to certain movies, video games, or social media means that every parent does the same. You do not know what types of traumas that individuals or families might be going through or have gone through. Some are coming from a place where they know all too well what grooming is. We do not live in a bubble free of pedophiles and human traffickers. We all know that too often, these people do work in schools. Many families have battled with mental health issues or addiction, either with themselves or loved ones. I'm very aware that we have many children in this district that lack home supervision and support. Therefore, now more than ever, our schools should not be subjecting kids with thoughts, ideas, vocab, words, that when doing a simple Google search brings them, leads them to drugs, sex, and violence. I am a firm believer that what you put in your eyes and ears is what you reflect out into the world. You cannot tell children that some lies are good lies just because they are protecting someone. Someday, they might be in a situation where that lie is keeping them in danger. The hypocrisy also needs to be addressed. There are lots of materials that depict violence. How do you tell kids not to talk or play out such things, yet it is okay to read about them or see pictures? Remember, we're talking about children that still imagination play. We do have some amazing teachers and staff, but just simply saying that teachers don't have to use the materials is not good enough. The materials are still available for their use. We need to know right now and in the future that our children are safe. It is not fair to shoulder this onto teachers. The curriculum is labor-intensive, it makes it very difficult to lesson plan. There are also issues with what the curriculum doesn't have. The lack of transparency surrounding this needs to be addressed. I'm requesting that we start a review panel that also includes parents. We need to include certain criteria that materials must meet if kept, and parent permission slips with opt-out options, as this should be the case for all grades, including middle and high school. That's it.
Thank you.
Basically, I just kind of want to jump on the coattails of the two ones in front of me here. We need to set up a panel, we need to set it up sooner than later. The transparency, I started going down this rabbit hole in August, and if people had been upfront and honest with me in August and gave me honest answers, this would have been addressed in September. It took this long and a lot of backpedaling from Mr. Kutcher. You've been hiding things, you haven't been transparent, even Jeanette telling us that, oh, there's only like five books. There's at least ten books in first grade that are inappropriate. This is not fair to our children. Our children deserve a good education, a quality education. Abuse and sexualization of the children, it is in New Hampshire. This is happening all over the country. It's here. Everybody thinks we live in this little protected area. It's here. We're getting the same things, we're trying to indoctrinate these kids, we're trying to desensitize these kids and make some of these things be normal. They're not normal. I don't want them normalized for my grandchildren, these parents don't want it normalized for their children. We need to do better, and we need to work together, and we need to make a committee where people can go through these things. And when people really see what's in some of this stuff, I think you're going to agree that a lot of this stuff needs to go. I mean, I don't know what you do with this curriculum, because you can't have some teachers feeling it's not a big deal and they're okay with using these books, and other teachers being like, absolutely not, or dispersing parents so that they can sign in and opt out. You can't do it like that. What are you going to have, these kids bouncing from room to room because some parents don't want it, some do? We need to educate them. Sexualization and sexual orientation and violence, that's part of our real world, but the babies don't need to hear these things. They'll grow up soon enough, we don't have to rush them. We need to go back and kind of soften things a little bit, and we need to have a good working rapport, and we need to have faith and trust in you guys and not be in stonewall. I mean, it's not a nice feeling when you ask questions and you get the runaround. I mean, like, like Kim said, like Caitlin said, we knew the copyright laws, and you knew them, and yet you still tried to stop us from getting these materials. And then you lied because, oh, I don't have enough books. But then all of a sudden, you had enough books that you could stockpile them over at SAU Four. I mean, be transparent about this stuff. Nobody's out to get anybody, we want what's best for our kids, and you guys want what's best for our kids. We want to work together. And I think we need to start breaking down some of these barriers and figure out what's going to be best for these kids moving forward and for our teachers. That's it. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Joshua Reynolds, New Hampton. First off, I want to thank all the teachers. I know some are probably at home listening via video, but we do appreciate everything that they do. This isn't an attack on the teachers, this is us trying to protect the children. I don't really have so much of a speech, it's more like bullet points, but regardless, I didn't have the time. With full-time jobs, raising three children, and building a house, we really don't have time for this, nor do I have time to question my children about what they learn in school today and then try to unteach some of it. No parent should have to worry about that. When our children get home from school, we should be able to just be with them and love them. There's no reason why this panel or committee that is proposed here tonight should not be approved. If you're not against this disturbing curriculum, then you're for it, and that's even more disturbing, because I know some of you are parents yourselves. We've all heard that teachers may substitute a word, a story, or an entire lesson if they don't feel comfortable with it. But as we all know, may substitute doesn't mean the same thing as will substitute. And why should we even be using a curriculum that even some teachers are uncomfortable with and may need to substitute? So we've already gone over some of the inappropriate words within the curriculum at previous meetings, so I'm not going to list them. But getting children used to inappropriate terminology is part of grooming. Some may not know what grooming is or what it means. Basically, grooming is step one for pedophiles and human traffickers. It basically consists of manipulating or training their victims to get them used to certain language, behaviors, or actions. Some may not have heard, but during a human trafficking bust in Florida, a hundred and eight people were arrested. Some were Disney employees. Why do you think those particular suspects chose Disney to work for? Pedophiles and human traffickers are creatures of opportunity. Twenty-seven thousand acres of children, where else would they be? Great place for them to be is Disney. Now, I'm not saying that the people who wrote this curriculum are pedophiles or human traffickers, but why are they doing a large part of the pedophile's work for them? Indoctrinating or grooming the children? Why is pedophilia and human trafficking crime skyrocketing lately? Could it be the new curriculum sweeping the country? Everyone's wondering why record numbers of children are being pulled from public schools and homeschooled or private schooled. Maybe they just got fed up with the curriculums and the school boards. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, John Sellers, actually, member-elect, State House Representative, grafted eighteen. But, there's a couple things. They got my ear, they also have a couple other ears, as far as the State House, people are starting to listen to them. The last thing we need to do is start, have a new law. We should either resolve this and not have a law, you know? Why do we always have to make a law for something? Let's just try to resolve it. And you guys need to do something in the public. Show the people, show the parents and stuff here, they're saying, yes, we're working on it, because we're not hearing anything. We've got to hear something, you know? Doing nothing is doing something, so let's hear from you guys, let's see what you're going to be starting to do for us, all right? Not just for me, I mean for them, all right? Thank you.
I do have one email that was sent in to the members of the school committee. As a member of Bristol and a parent of a current third-grade student at Prisell Elementary School and a student who has been, who will be entering kindergarten in fall of 2024, I'm writing to support the board's November seventh plan to abide by current district policy to evaluate the Amplify CKLA curriculum. My family and other parents I have spoken with are currently very pleased with the instruction in reading vocabulary and writing that our children are receiving. I know that some parents in the community are displeased with certain vocabulary words or with some of the content. However, from what I have heard at previous school board meetings and read online, I see those parents interpret such content as adult lens, sorry, such content using an adult lens that, one, is not the way that such material is actually being taught, and two, that our children lack. I am pleased with the age-appropriate instruction my son is receiving. I want him to be exposed to new ideas, to read about interesting people, places, and stories from around the world, from classic literature such as The Wind and the Willows and contemporary nonfiction about animal habitats, which he was studying earlier this month. This week's spelling words include rake, file, dine, and raise, all words which are totally appropriate but which I'm sure could be taken out of context if someone wanted to. Although I do believe that parents have a right to make decisions about the way our children are raised, such as deciding what movies or books we watch or read at home, I also believe that the purpose of public school is to raise literate, empathetic, curious citizens who are capable of critical thinking. From what I have seen in my child's take-home work and in the materials, symbols, and evidence-based statistics provided online, Amplify CKLA accomplishes that purpose. Many of our district's excellent educators took painstaking time to research and pilot this curriculum. Before dismissing it on the basis of a few complaints, I hope that the school board and its curriculum subcommittee takes into account the voices of all stakeholders, including those who want our children to receive high-quality, diverse, and rigorous instructional materials. Thank you, Ariel Maloney. And that was the only public comment I got via email. Any further comments? Seeing none? Sorry, sorry. Yeah, go ahead. Nope, that's fine.
I'm just here to listen, but I think I want to ask one question. My name is Erica in Matson, and I'm a Bristol resident. I have three kids who have gone through the Newfound School System kindergarten, through my first to graduate last year. Can I just ask the question? Every staff member or any, whether they're in an educator position or, you know, working in the cafeteria or cleaning the floors, does everybody who work for our school system go through some sort of background check?
Yes.
Okay. I was under that assumption, and this is just something that was how I became aware of these concerns, that the heading to this apparent group that's concerned about our curriculum, this is the heading statement on their group. It says, "We have an epidemic of sexual predators following our children." Whether it be on the computers, whether it be in our public parks, whether it be in the workplace, or even our schools. And that caught my attention, big time. I am not concerned about sexual predators in the SAU school system. I understand that sometimes bad things happen in the world. And that's not one of my major concerns here. I just want to say that I very much trust our educators. We've been 12 years in the school system with three different kids, both male students, female students. Some of my kids have challenges with education and some excel. And I have had nothing but exemplary, I understand I'm just one experience, but I just want to say that I've had teachers contact me when there's been concerns. I've never worried, and I really appreciate the education we give our kids here in the school system. I really appreciate all the conversations I've ever had with all the teachers. There's not one teacher that my kids have had that, there might have been one I didn't jive with, but none I didn't trust. And I trust their qualifications, and I trust that they will interact with the students in their classroom appropriately and that they will not lay something on the table that's not appropriate for children. And I 100% agree with that statement. What made me really uncomfortable when I was looking through what some of the other parents found uncomfortable was I felt like things were being sexualized that are not sexual, and that's what made me really uncomfortable. And not only does that make me uncomfortable, but I'm uncomfortable with the idea that members of the community could take something away from my kids that I feel is 100% appropriate and part of a well-rounded education. And I am very aware of bad things in the world, and I want to protect my kids just as much as the next parent. But I do not think that anything that's happening is sexualizing our kids or grooming our kids, and it makes me uncomfortable. I don't know what else to say. I'm kind of, I don't know, I'm just uncomfortable by the whole situation, and I trust our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jim Flick, Alexandria. I'm not here to bash the school or the curriculum. I just want to say you need to proceed with caution. You can say, "We're looking at it through adult eyes," or vice versa, but what I know of it, there are some indwangles there that can be interpreted in various ways. You've got to be careful you don't set these kids up for somebody out on the street. You know, it's a, you've just got to proceed with caution and really think about what's being put out there. Is there a better way of presenting it? It's a big responsibility you guys got, educating your kids. There are some lines, I believe, that the school does tend to cross over. It should be a parent's decision, a parent, under a parent's control. You've got to be aware of that line as well. That's it.
Thank you. Next correspondence. Announcements and recognitions, superintendent report.
Thank you. Just to respond a bit to Erica. So any employee hired here is fingerprinted. Those fingerprints are sent to the state police and to the FBI, and I get a complete and thorough report from every one of those. So we do have a new state law that's very strict about that, and I'm really happy that we have it in place. I've explained that to the school board before. So I feel like if there was a, somebody who had been convicted to be a pedophile or anything like that, that would show up in that background report, and they would not be working there. I will be bringing a proposal, as the board had asked me to for the next meeting, about the curriculum committee that's being discussed, and consulting with the School Boards Association regarding that. So that you can look forward to at the December 12 meeting. We did hold our first district-wide data meeting, which was something new for Newfound, and we established data points that we want to track as time goes on. So it was, I felt a very enlightening meeting, and it was some really great conversations. So we're the ones that kind of look at the big picture and start making decisions about how we can affect, positively affect learning in the district. The CKLA meetings that we discussed before, the first round, have all taken place. And if you recall, the charge of that, of those, so we had grade level, by grade, and Jeanette shared attended every one of those, was to, and I was there for some of them, was to look at any topics that teachers felt were inappropriate, or any words that they felt that were inappropriate. Jeanette's working on coming out with a report, as I had told the parents when we sent out the messaging about that, that we would share that document with the parents. So that'll be coming out, but overall, I think those meetings were very positive. It was a really good feeling in the room, and they really appreciated that time to work together. We're planning on having our data presentation to the school board with Jeanette and I and the six principals for December 12. So that is the data from last May's New Hampshire SAS, the state assessment. So we've now gotten that, and we have the state averages. We know we had to wait for the state averages, as we did last year, because everybody's interested to see how we compare to the rest of the state. So we've gotten those earlier this year than we did last year. So we'll be happy to share that with the board. And lastly, I was able to attend at the New Hampton Community School, the Veterans Day ceremony. It was just absolutely tremendous, I have to say. And I want to give special thanks to Anne Holler and our principal out there, and all of her teachers and students. They had a large group of veterans in attendance on that day, and every class did a special presentation, a song or something that they had made up. And it was just a really great feeling, I gotta say. There was a few times when there were a lot of teary eyes, including with myself. So I just want to give Anne Holler and her teachers a shout out for that, because it was really nice of them. And Fran, I know she already laughed, but Fran had attended as well.
I have a question for you. The district-wide data meeting, that's the first one we had, right?
Yep.
Is it like a committee, or do you guys, is it per school? Is it at the SAU office? Like, how, what does that look like? Sorry.
It was, so all of the, it was in this building, in room 106, where you meet. We expanded our administrative team to include our social worker, include our behavior specialists, to bring in more data, and we're looking at information about truancy and discipline issues, number of suspensions, number of...
Attendance, attendance, attendance too.
Attendance and things like that. So the point of it was, so now we've kind of drawn that line and having our first data meeting, we'll be holding that data, and then we can add to it as we go along and see if what we're doing is affecting, having a positive effect on those. So yeah, it was part of...
Does it also include like data from test scores too?
We had New Hampshire SAS data, we had NIWA data. Those were the two big ones. We had decided ahead of time as a group what data we wanted to track. So, you know, there was a lot of data, there was a data point for our behavior specialist, how many students he's seeing, and how many plans, behavior plans he's created. It was a very positive meeting. So now that we have that, we can look at, we'll be able to look back.
Heidi's laughing at me because she knows what I'm going to say. It would be really good to have somebody on the school board on that data committee meeting, wouldn't it? I know we can't vote on it on this meeting, but because we're doing the curriculum one, I think it would behoove us, because we just talked about, one, putting the committee in for the Hill District. We can't vote on it today because it wasn't on the agenda. But I think because of the amount of information, maybe I'm just on my own little island and my own little la-la land, but I think based on the information and the test scores and our test scores in the district, it might be beneficial.
Sure.
Do other people want that on the agenda for next meeting, for the data committee?
Committee's on our next agenda. It'd be amazing.
Lots of working committees is positive. That's where the, that's where the nuts and bolts happen.
I love it, I love it.
More committees, I think we need three more. At least.
But if we could all mirror the facilities committee with the way we bring it back.
I agree. Facilities, they've got it, they've got their stuff together.
We got it going. Because it's a good working committee that's really, it's a really all-inclusive committee, and you guys bring stuff back appropriately to us, and it's really how the school board is supposed to function.
Learn from the best.
But really, you know, that's how the school board is supposed to act, is really taking that committee information where it's the nuts and bolts, the interaction and things like that, and bring it back to this committee, and we discuss it and vote on it. I just, now that you brought it up, so, sorry. All right, we'll put it on the next meeting's agenda.
We'll be sure to invite somebody from the next meeting and see if somebody can attend. Architectural study update, the date, we had set the deadline for folks who are interested in the building committee, and that is closing out this week on December 1. As of today, we had 12 folks, 12 people that are interested in serving on the committee. So we will be looking at that and figuring out who will be on that committee, and then the board will ultimately vote to make the decision as to who will serve on that committee. And then the architect is ready to move forward in January and start having meetings with that.
Are you wanting a board member on that committee? While we're on the subject.
Yes, no, that was on our, Robin, it's on our whiteboard, is to include, well, I've asked already, this committee, has anybody volunteered? I brought it up three different meetings.
Has anyone volunteered?
No. Tom, I'll put you on. I have brought it up three different times, and it was crickets here.
I had it as a note from last meeting on my desk.
Very good. And that's all I have.
I'm writing down my notes that need to be on the agenda for next meeting so that we make motions and fasten committees and meetings, sorry. Student rep.
So, this time of year can be really upsetting for summer people who love their days at the lake or just being in the warm sun, but for so many Newfound students, after seeing the first snow of the season, it was just a really good reason to get excited, including myself, because how fortunate we are to be offered so many different extracurriculars during the winter season. Today, cast rehearsal for one-acts, our one-act play started, which is kind of like competition between every grade, and it's not only for bragging rights, but it's also for winter carnival points. And so that's a really big fun thing that happens in the auditorium. It's going to be January 28, so show up, it's going to be awesome. Project Promise again this year is holding a ski and snowboard program for students at Gunstock Mountain. It's after school, it was $175, transportation, dinner, snacks, everything was included, and I think it was for six times to go to the mountain. And if you look at ticket prices right now, it's really expensive, and so it's really, really great that students were able to be given that opportunity. The music department has been very busy, band and chorus. The winter concert is coming up, and I'm pretty sure that the theme is going to be movie and like TV songs, kind of, I should know because I'm in it. Rokappa, pretty sure it's new this year, but it's led by Amy Doolin, and it's Social Studies Honor Society, and they went to BHVS and helped serve the elementary schoolers' Thanksgiving lunch, which is something they do every year. And so they handed out like apple cider and sat and talked to the kids, and it sounded like it was a lot of fun. But on December 3, they're also going to the Boston Veteran Cemetery to go and lay wreaths on the graves. And athletic nose, basketball, cheer, and alpine ski all started either last week or this week. And so those seasons are getting underway, and we have a lot of athletes excited after the long dip of nothing. Academically speaking, juniors were getting called to start signing up for SAT prep, and everyone's looking forward to that come spring, not really. Kind of off of what Ms. Hodgson's presentation was, every two weeks, I turn to my peers and I'm like, what should I tell the school board tonight? And it's always kind of a joke, but also kind of not. It's the drugs in the bathroom. And, well, it's not completely in the bathrooms, it's everywhere. It's just, it's normal to walk in or like see someone doing drugs or whatever, and it's, the most upsetting part is it's normal for us to joke about it, kind of, like that's just a part of our culture. And whatever the solution becomes, it just, it really needs to be known that it is a really big issue, and it's not like a once-in-a-while thing. Like, the first day of school, I walked in on someone in the bathroom, and it was, it's just, it's really upsetting, and it's here, it's happening. But that is all.
Thank you. Teacher's report. Teacher's report is about the high school. So second quarter started three weeks ago, classes are looking great. Our music department continues to be very active and is growing rapidly after the COVID slump. Students are enthusiastic about learning through the musical platform and are craving more all the time. We've had several students selected to perform at the All-New England Choral Festival, as well as at the Lakes Region Band and Choral Festivals. Micah mentions the athletics. The girls' basketball has their first away game on Saturday, December 3. Boys' first game is home on Friday, December 7. The unified basketball team will be playing their first game this Wednesday at Wynn Squam. Skiing practice started, and Ragged is the first event on December 14. The spirit team has been practicing for a few weeks now, and their first home event will be on Friday, December 9, the boys' game. And there's been talk about a snowboard team, but it's still a little bit up in the air, adding another snow team. And there's been talk about a snowboard team, but it's still a little bit up in the air, adding another snow team as an opportunity. We've had a bunch of field trips this fall. So just in the past three weeks, the National Honor Society volunteered at the Mobile Food Pantry. She already mentioned about how they worked at BHBS. The criminal justice class visited the Grafton County Prison. The drama department had a Shakespeare field trip and there was a career exploration over to Freidenberg so we could learn about different careers that are available locally. So they enjoyed that. We created 10 Thanksgiving food hampers for families in need here at the high school, thanks to the New Hampshire Food Bank, Bristol Hannafords for their donations. Many school groups and student, individual students created trees for the Festival of Trees event last Friday and Saturday and the event supported our drama department. I didn't win. The fall play Clue went really well. I heard some say it was their favorite. Students are rehearsing for the one-act plays. We had 32 students participated in the college-bound day where students can apply free of charge for different universities. One student won a $500 grant and as of last week, two had been accepted. We had more students accepted today, two universities or colleges. 23 students completed the ASFAB, the Armed Service Vocational Aptitude Test, last week, so that was great. And we brought 25 students to the November 9th math meet in Belmont. For the past three years, we've been lucky to bring 10 students. We are currently tied for second place in our division and our next math meet is on December 14th. So.
Great.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Budget committee?
We have started going through different object codes within the budget. We're kind of in the midst of that process and we have a meeting scheduled for the 5th to continue that process.
Short and sweet. Okay. Facilities committee?
We have a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday.
Okay. Policy committee, we're working on, we're working on going, well, you guys and Sue are being amazing in helping us go through every single policy letter, whether we have it, when it was last updated.
We're getting close. So once we've gotten that done, then we're gonna schedule a meeting.
Okay.
It's a lot, so we're doing the cross-check. So if you recall, the school board had authorized to have the School Boards Association do a check of your policies and then we met with, Melissa and I met with Will Phillips, who works for School Boards Association and he said it would speed up the process and save us money if we did our own cross-check on our, on their index versus ours. So we're looking at, they're listing their policies, we, we're checking to see if we have it or not. Sometimes it's coded differently, sometimes the title is different and so that'll give them a good starting point and that will save them a lot of time. But it is very time-consuming and super process help. We're getting probably about three-quarters of the way through now, but it is, there are a lot of policies.
Yes, yes, there are. Because every time I go to look for one specific one, I can never find it and have to click on every tab.
Yep.
I will be honest. Wellness committee?
We'll meet soon, next week I think. Yep, we haven't had a meeting since the last one, you're right.
Okay, Article 5 committee?
Pierre and Robin compiled all the proposals and they were going to be sent out to all the select boards. We'll get a copy of it. My only question is, what is our goal with that, once they're sent out?
I think it was just to educate everybody as to what the committee did.
Okay.
That was, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't, so the committee did not, is not gonna make a recommendation.
Right.
For a change to the funding formula, but they felt like the public ought to be able to have the information about the different scenarios that were investigated. And so I sent out a message today, I don't know if you saw.
Yeah, no, I saw it. That, I just completely set my mind to.
So the committee wanted, so we sent it out, we asked for comment to the committee. It appears like everybody's okay with it. The next step, this board will get one, we'll send, they wanted it sent to each select board of the seven towns. We'll put it on our SOU website and we'll go from there. I think that's, that's left off, right?
Yeah, that's.
Right, because ultimately there was no recommendation because there was no vote to bring a recommendation to the school board to put in a school board-sponsored article.
That's correct. That's exactly right.
So anything, so anything could happen in March at deliberative session?
It would be a warrant, a petition, if anybody wanted to do anything with a funding formula, it'd have to be petition warrant. Because there was no recommendation to us as a board, so therefore we, we don't take any action because there was nothing brought to us from that committee.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure the public's aware of that. Alright, so new business. These are policies for second read. As you can see below, we had to consult Will Phillips because we got a little ahead of ourselves and unfortunately we wrote second read on the first read last time because of the two batches of policies. So it was a, it was a mess, but as you can see on the bottom where it says, note, the policies had mistakenly indicated the policies up for second read and should have been for first reading. The board did approve the policies and they are on this agenda for second reading. And that's what Will Phillips from the School Boards Association said that we needed to do to cover us because we have read them and approved them once, so just so everybody's aware. So, I need a motion to approve the policies for second read.
Assumed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, next, policies to rescind. I need a motion.
I make a motion to rescind those policies, EBC, E and ICA. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Board member comments?
I have two comments. The first one is, in signing the manifest, one of the most recent one I signed, I noticed a staff member used their own personal credit card to pay for a trip that needs to stop. The school, district should have a school district credit card to pay for such trips, programs, whatever the case is. That's very concerning and as a former state employee, we were not allowed to use our own personal credit cards because it was, a red flag went up every time it was used for something. And I questioned that and it was, I was informed that that individual paid for the trip with their own credit card. No, the school district should have their own credit card to pay for such trips like that, any, any conferences, something like that. Because I'm sure it trades in red flags with the auditors. It just doesn't look right. And the other comment too, I've had a few people ask me about this. It, the SAU office is a municipal building and the flag should be flying on a daily basis. If nobody wants to put it up, I'll come down and put the flag up and take it down. But the flag should be flown over the school building, SAU office, absolutely.
Any other board comments?
I just wanted, I think, over tonight's concerns, there was kind of a feeling that nothing's being done in regards to the curriculum. So, at next month's meeting, is there going to be like hard, this is the committee, this is who's on it, this is, okay.
Yep, yep.
Because I think that's kind of what people are waiting for. It's like actual steps, not, okay, we're doing a committee, okay, the committee's approved, okay, here's the makeup, but actually, here's who's on it and here's our meeting schedule.
That meeting, the board asked me on, to have that written up December 12th.
Yep.
I'm just doing what the board told me to do.
And you also outlined meetings that were occurring that you mentioned earlier, right, within like the, do not.
Right, the all-day grade level meetings just finished. Because you have to spread those out, you know, scheduling, yep, they did. And so, so for every grade, we went through the domain and the knowledge. And so we did make it through all of the domains for knowledge, for kindergarten, for third, fourth and fifth grade, but not first and second. But we're now scheduling again in January and literally we're, just basically CKLA gave us what they had for concerns and I shared that with the board, but we know that we're vetting it more locally here. And it's been incredible, great conversations and like there was one where we went, okay, we're not gonna do this unit. Like I think, you know, that's okay. Like we discussed that and so that, so I'm almost finished with that document. But the thing was, is what happened is, is we were doing the document, the teachers put all their notes in there too, but now we're like, wait, that isn't really the request, we want to get just that out to the families, so.
And all that, it will be the same across all elementary schools, right?
Yes. So what it is, is, which has been great, because it's horizontal alignment, we've been working great with now this year on vertical teams. But this is everybody at the grade level and I'll tell you what, we've been hoping for that and that's been in the spot analysis, so it's been.
Because I think that was a concern.
Well, and the other thing was, every one of those meetings started with Pierre kicking off the entire agenda and all four elementary principals there in support too. So that, just wanted to share. And then some stayed, you know, for as long as they could, but I was present for all of them and taking notes too.
I just want to make the comment of how a school board runs because evidently that's been questioned quite significantly over the past month or so. So the school board runs, and I'll be honest, when I first started, they had to remind me a few times that we had to stay on topic because I'm horrible at getting off topic. But the school board runs based on the agenda that is set forth for the, for the day, for the evening, for our meeting. People can request to be on the agenda, anybody can request to be on the agenda to have a longer than a five-minute conversation and then it's vetted to make sure it's appropriate to make sure, because we are live-streamed, just like it would be for anybody, just like the teachers have to bring it here before it goes up on the screen just to be, for safety, security, et cetera reasons, there's certain things we're not allowed to bring up. But with that being said, the school board is run so that we're making decisions, having some discussion, but that the nuts and bolts and, and the, you know, nitty-gritty is run, and those discussions are run by committees and those committees report back to the school board. So because they're, because of the efficiency, to run the meetings efficient and appropriate per rules, regulations and all the RSAs that we have to follow, that's kind of the inner workings and how it works. The back and forth typically happens at those committee-level meetings. You know, just like I've mentioned multiple times in regards to public comment, we have a whole great policy on public comments in, in our policies as well, but just so that people, remind people that it's not that we're trying to cut people off or, or, you know, not have that back and forth with them, it's just we're trying to have an efficient use of our time here and then those smaller things getting farmed out to committees where there can be that back and forth discussion, so that's all. And I have to remind myself of that often as well, so that's all, my comment for the night. Anybody else? Okay, financial approval of manifests?
I'll be at the next meeting for the movement ones, but they're continuing.
Okay. Emergency building repairs?
Yeah, there was three of them. I think we just asked it before, the, the middle school stair treads that I guess is, um, students have been tripping over them. The approximate cost for that is fifty-three thousand dollars. As you're probably aware, the New Hampton had a water problem and that has been repaired. It's still in the process.
Nope, it's completed. Yep, that's completed.
They found the problem?
They found the problem. And also at the New Hampton, they had the flooring in the kindergarten and the hall completed. Actually, like there's just some photos, I don't have them with me, but Jason has some, I'll send some out so you can see it. That cost was thirty thousand, thirty-seven thousand sixteen dollars. We discussed where that money was coming from. We do have a maintenance trust fund obviously, but this time we do have that contingency that is sitting there waiting for potential emergencies. But being very early in the school year, I was looking for approval to use a maintenance trust fund if we need to. I didn't want to say, yes, we're going to use it, if we didn't need to, hopefully, if we don't have any further emergencies, we can just use it from the regular contingency fund towards the end of the year. However, if emergencies do wake up, arise, these, these, these items would need potentially to come out of the maintenance trust fund. So if we could get approval to use it if we need to, by, I would say probably May, June, we would obviously know that. So looking for approval to use and add up.
So to kind of reclassify them, because right now you're just using it and out of the line item.
Yeah.
But we might have to move it.
We might have to.
Okay, gotcha.
I'm hoping not to, but yes.
Yeah, we like to be able to preserve that expendable trust fund as much as we can, because we've been working so hard to build that up.
To build it up.
But right now, we have a great deal of vacancy, you know, positions that are vacant and so it'd make more sense to use our, our budget for that, for those if we can afford to. And then only tap into expendable trust at the end of the year if we have to.
If we have to recode it, classify it out of that. Gotcha.
And that doesn't flag for the auditors or anything to reclassify like that because it's during the school year of time?
Yep. Okay. So what was the total? Oh, sorry. Because I didn't know what the, the New Hampton water.
Yeah.
Was, you didn't say that one.
Oh, the New Hampton water was nineteen thousand seven hundred and four.
About a hundred and ten?
No, it's not that much.
Well, you said the flooring, New Hampton, New Hampton floor was thirty-seven.
Seventeen, seventeen, seven, oh, four, fifty-three thousand and three, seven, three, one, six, nineteen, seven, oh, four.
Was fifty-three thousand even?
It wasn't, but it's very close.
Three, seven, three, one, six.
Hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, you're good.
Well, you said fifty-three, twenty, thirty-seven.
Yeah, our contingency fund was four hundred.
Four hundred, so we should be alright.
We should be alright.
I make a motion that if we need to, we can adjust those funds for those three fixes, the stair treads, the New Hampton Community School water repair and the New Hampton Community School flooring to the maintenance trust fund if need be.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. SAU position?
I hand it out to each member, a quick memo I just had made up, Ms. Dabby, payroll AP position that we have, what was approved last year or in January for a part-time position. We had somebody in it, she has since left. And while she was in it, we realized that there was a heck of a lot more work than part-time really could take care of. She was putting in about 20 hours a week and as much as she, she actually had some experience in the, she works here in Newfoundland and she actually had some experience in AP, it's just a lot bigger job than what we thought it was going to be. So I'm looking and speaking with now who is working in payroll and human resources and talking to the ladies out and back. We would like to request that that position be approved for full-time. I have put it into the fiscal year 24 budget, proposed budget, it is in there as a full-time position. But for the remainder of this year, we do have additional funds from the Danbury Administrative Assistant who is no longer, that position has, is not being filled, so that's additional funds and we have many vacant positions, as you're aware of, at the pair of professionals. So the money is available in the she's budget to fund that. In addition, I may have one little comment, we have discussions with Hill regarding, they have a, some duties that they're looking for that perhaps they can share their payroll and some human resources with and, and put those duties on us. And in regards to that, they would also be interested in sharing some of those costs. We haven't come up with definitive numbers, but that would, now that we're gonna have a subcommittee on that, that is something definitely to be brought up and determined if that's some, where we want to go with that. But whether that comes to fruition or not.
We still have the funds without, we still need, putting that in.
We still have the funds and we still have the need to have a full-time position.
And as I stated during the budget presentation, the other thing that really we need to be aware of is some succession planning. You know, we have some people that are getting a little older, who do great work, but those jobs that lead up the training that's required to be able to do those positions, really is a long time. And it's not like just pull somebody in and after a month, they can be doing that. So we really need to be mindful of bringing somebody up to speed that can take over when, when somebody retires. And right now, we don't have that. And so one of, some of those people walked in instead of retiring in a month, we would, right now, I think we. And so one of, some of those people walked in instead of retiring in a month, we would, right now, I think we'd, we'd be in a hard place. So we, we need to, that's, that's another part of this. And, and we can't really attract that type of person with a part-time position. And we found that with that part-time position, there wasn't really enough time to learn the job either. You know, the person came in and worked super hard and did everything. But there's a lot to that, what's going on in the business office, so.
So this position is dedicated specifically for special ed? Because I thought we had somebody doing that.
No, no, this is payroll and special ed. Special ed, Janica, as you know, does a lot of that, but there's the accounts payable portion. That part-time person was taking on that responsibility, didn't have quite enough time. But mainly, I would say it's gonna be, it's probably seventy percent payroll. And the rest would be accounts payable.
Yeah, okay, because the way it reads, they're, they're taking over the, okay.
Yeah, just the AP portion, not the whole.
Just the accounts payable.
Yeah, just the accounts payable.
I make a motion to approve the full-time payroll AP position at the SOU office.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? I need a motion to adjourn.
Assumed.
All those in favor? Aye.